Withdrawal and a refund on 124 Main Street. Jameson Kepchik, I can't pronounce his last name. He was planning on putting a business in and made an application to the Planning and Zoning Commission up at 124 Main. After doing his due diligence, he discovered that he could not move forward with that, so he withdrew his application. As a result, he's going, he's asked to have his, uh, his, uh, application fee refunded. In order to do that, it has to come through here, so if you want to make a motion to refund that, it's $200.
Make a motion to, uh, refund his application fee.
I'll second that. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the fourth item on the agenda is to recognize Bob Sassy's written request to address the Board of Selectmen. I received a phone call, or a phone call from Mr. Sassy today, and he is not able to attend tonight, so we'll see if he wants to get on the next agenda. We'll just reschedule that. And that is all that we have for, uh, for tonight's Board of Selectmen's meeting. If there's an awful lot of folks here, though, if anybody has any, we can address the audience of citizens, if anyone has anything to come, please.
Tony Bolduc.
Hey, Tony.
I just have a question about the cemetery over on Essex Street. I know Eversource cut down a lot of trees, um, and they're just laying in the cemetery. Are they gonna cut those up?
Yeah.
They're just, they've been sitting there for a while.
What they told me is that they leave trees out for people if people are burning wood, that they're, they have every intention. As soon as they finish getting down the road, they're gonna come back and pick up everything on the pay list.
All right. Call my team.
If you want to continue to call the tree guy, James Howard, I call, I talk to him every couple of days, or at least, at least once a week to get him out there. I'm actually considering calling someone else, because I don't want to leave that hanging there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Just one second. Anyone else? No? Okay, I think we'll just have a motion to adjourn with, uh, you ready? Uh, so I'll second that. Anything?
Two.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Two or nothing? Aye. Before we get started, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. We have these meetings once a year to do these appointments, and, uh, we usually have about five or six people here, so it's great to see everyone here participate, um, and help make this happen.
Point of order?
Go ahead.
Where is the Republican Selectman?
Republicans selectman is on his way from Delaware to Deep River.
Is he gonna be here?
He's probably not gonna be here.
Um, can your meeting move forward without him since he was at the Board of Selectmen meeting?
Yes, it can.
How does that work?
It's not a Board of Selectmen's meeting.
No, just the Board of Selectmen nominated during the past year.
Correct.
And so how can this meeting continue if the entire Board of Selectmen are not here?
There's a forum.
There's a forum of the Board of Selectmen. It's a pretty simple question, pretty simple answer. Thank you. Um, so, that said, I'm gonna ask for a nomination for moderator.
Excuse, excuse me, you, uh, I, not a point of order, just a point of camera.
Oh.
Are you running?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, gosh.
Never mind, I'm sorry.
Well, we weren't open anyway.
Yeah.
I forgot to say, we were gonna open the meeting at seven o'clock. Um, the first item is to, uh, appoint a moderator, I think we had a nomination for moderator.
I gave Olivera.
Second. For, uh, second, is there any other nominations? You're done? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good evening, again, for those coming in tonight. Uh, there are additional agendas down here, or if anybody needs some, everybody else up for agendas here? Town clerk, I'd like to appoint the, uh, town clerk to be the clerk for this, uh, meeting, unless there's any objections. And, uh, that's all, and if you please, uh, read the call.
This is the legal notice for the Town of Deep River, a special town meeting. Uh, the Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Richard H. Smith, Town Hall, conference room. This was moved upstairs to accommodate more people. To approve the actions of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of November 13th, 2018. Appointments to the Community Health Committee. Nancy Howard, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2020. Michael Spanner, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2020. Michael H. Tomlinson, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2020. Also to approve actions of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of November 27th, 2018. Appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission. Anthony R. Bolduc, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Bruce Egerton, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Christopher DeBoscher, alternate member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Also, appointments to zoning Board of Appeals. Edward Judd, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Charles Rayner, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Lenore T. Coon, alternate member, term to expire 12/1/2021. Also to approve actions of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of December 27th, 2018. Appointments to Planning and Zoning Commission. Jonathan Kastner, regular member, term to expire 12/1/2021. This notice is dated at Deep River on Monday, December 31st, 2018.
Yeah, the motion to accept the call. No move. And, uh, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, accepting the call? Say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Okay, very good vote, very, we'll, uh, continue with the call. Uh, this being a special meeting, a special town meeting, uh, we only can talk about what's on the, uh, agenda for today. Uh, just remind you, we begin the conversations on this, and I'd like to recommend, uh, well, before, we're gonna cover each of the, uh, recommendations by, uh, by Dick. So, the first group, November 13th, the second group, the 27th, and then the third group, uh, the 2nd/27th. Um, I have a motion to approve the appointments made on November 13th, 2018, for Nancy Howard, Michael Spanner, and Michael H. Tomlinson to the Community Health Committee.
Second.
And the second? Um, uh, all in favor? We have the second one, all in favor. Uh, no, actually. Well, after we did the second call, we can, uh, thank you. Been a couple of years since I've done this town, and it's still very good. Uh, so, uh, now, open for discussion, any discussion about these appointments? Okay, looks like none, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to carry for the appointments for the Community Health Committee. Uh, second one, for November 27th, for the Planning and Zoning Commission, for Anthony, uh, Bolduc, Bruce Egerton, and Christopher, uh, oh, boy.
Bruce Egerton.
Sorry, can I say that? Um, all in favor to, uh, uh, I need a motion to accept that, so. No move. Second? Thank you. And discussion, any discussion on these appointments?
Can you take them individually? Or is it?
Yes, we can take them individually.
Second?
We need a motion to do that, thank you.
Uh, we have a, um, so, uh, maybe an amendment to the motions. Amendment to, uh, well, uh, uh, we are, uh, all in favor of the motion to vote on these three individually. Do I have a motion for that? No move. And the second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor to accept that motion, thank you. All in favor of accepting the, uh, modification to the motion, uh, voting them individually? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Monica, motion carried. So, the, uh, motion will be looking at these individually. Um, uh, any discussion on them before I begin the, uh, looking at the voting on them individually? Okay, the first one is Anthony, uh, Bolduc, all in favor of, um, appointing Anthony to the PNC.
Yeah, I have a motion. We have to.
Oh, a motion, okay. He knows, okay. Sorry. Uh, so, uh, I got, uh, a motion, have a motion to approve Anthony, uh, Bolduc to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a term to expire 2021. No move. Yeah, second?
Second.
Okay.
Who said that?
Mark.
Charlie. I got a motion, any discussion? Uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One, I guess. Uh, the second one, I have a motion for Bruce Egerton, uh, for Planning and Zoning Commission, term to expire 2021. No move.
Second.
Second. Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of, uh, appointing Bruce to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a term to expire 2021, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Does that sound to me like a motion carried? Is that it? Does everybody agree with that? I only heard the two names. Okay, motion carried. The, uh, third, for appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Christopher, uh, term to expire 2021, I have a motion to, um, appoint Christopher to that role. No move. Second? Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of appointing Christopher to the PNC? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Uh, going to the appointment of zoning Board of Appeals, um, have a motion to appoint, uh, all three to the term to expire 2021. No move. Second?
Second.
Second, Jim. Uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of appointing the three to the, uh, Planning Board of Appeals, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, motion carried. Now, to approve the act, uh, the, uh, the last one to approve is, um, Board of Selectmen's regular meeting, Planning and Zoning, for Jonathan Kastner to appoint him to the PNC, term expires 2021. Uh, do I have a, um, uh, a motion to, have a motion for that? No move. Second?
Second.
Okay, uh, discussion? Anybody have the, uh, want to talk about the appointment?
Well, can I ask a question? Sorry, please. I just want to understand why this is a different date, why you chose a different date than others that were appointed to be on the PNC?
Because a vacancy on that commission opened up between these, a resignation came just prior to this.
I have another question. Is it ethical that he already came from the town?
Yes, that, that question was asked and answered back in 1993, here in Deep River, and he served on that commission since then, he was on there many years before that, but he's served since then. He's never been not on the commission in all that time, and it's also been asked and answered around the state. Many municipalities have the exact same ordinance and have had the same question asked and answered.
Do we really agree with that?
Do we agree with it?
Yeah.
I do. Our Board of Select, our Board of Selectmen do, and that's why we're here today, to vote on all of this, that's why we do this every year. He has been, he has been appointed in these positions every two years since, for 30 years. One second.
Many of us in the town feel the same way you do, and we feel that the ordinance in the town should be changed, so that if any town employee cannot be on the PNC, and that was what we defended in 1993, and it failed, and that's why we would like to vote against Mr. Kastner, to show our opposition to the, to the ordinance as it stands. And so we're hoping that many people in this room will vote against Mr. Kastner, because we disagree, because he has been an assistant to the first selectman for over 30 years.
That is, that is the big question.
That's, go ahead.
So, another question I have, is how many times have we been on this floor, and is there a time to get some people in here?
There's, there's.
Why is he being reappointed?
There are, there are people that are of the same mind. I've heard in the last couple of weeks, people are of the same mind, that there may be, there should be term limits on planning and zoning in all commissions. Um, the, what I, one of the reasons that I think Jonathan is valuable to the Planning and Zoning Commission is because of his experience. He knows the regulations, he knows the statutes, he knows the history of the town. He's been involved and he's learned from all of those years, and I think that it's appropriate to continue to use that experience and for the town to benefit from that experience.
Now, I'm of the mind that new people should be brought in. I mean, I'm not knocking Jonathan's age, but.
Yep.
I'm just appointing them.
Okay, thank you. I think you have some questions here.
So, I would just like to suggest going forward that it be a more transparent, um, validation process, as others, people have to discuss this, also from PNC, um, kind of. So, my name's Dr. Kastner, 137 River Street, I'd just like to suggest that it go forward that it be a more transparent process for validations for PNC in all, um, commissions. I know there's some people who have expressed interest in being on PNC, some new faces, uh, which I would support, uh, and so it might be, uh, a good idea to have a general call to nominate these perhaps, uh, rather than, uh, have the same faces show up for 20 or 30 years on the same commission.
We, we have, um, all of the vacancies that are on the, uh, on all of the commissions are listed on the town website and in the Deep River News every quarter, so when there's a vacancy, people are, are aware. I have had interest from, um, one particular resident who also sits on the Design Advisory Board, he can't be on both, and I, I, I value his, the Board of Selectmen value his, um, experience on that. Uh, we have, right now, we have three people who have expressed interest in this position in the last two weeks. Um, all of that has happened subsequent to this nomination. Um, all of them will need to be spoken to and vetted, we need to look at their experience. Just, just wanting to be on the commission does not necessarily put you on a commission. Um, but, you know, we, we think that we do try to let people know whenever there's a vacancy.
Matt Seafill, we've got 263 Winter Grove. Is there a conflict of interest, you worked for Dick Smith, and now he's working for you, and now you want to go on, um, Zoning Board of Appeals?
As we, no, not on the Planning and Zoning.
Planning and Zoning.
Yep, which he sits on, has, and has sat on for 30 years. Jonathan's experience in this town, his commitment to this town, I think, is something that people are generally overlooking. I, I think that, um, to think that there's a conflict of interest is, at, at times, I consider that to be an insult to Jonathan's integrity. Um, he's sat in biology.
It's meant to be an insult, legally.
Um, I don't, I don't think that there's a conflict of interest, he does not, just like everyone in town, he does, he doesn't have a direct influence on me. He works in the town hall, his office is removed from the Selectmen's office. He fills in, at, in 1993, Jonathan was referred to as the gopher for the town hall, because he does just about everything. He's done a good dump, he's done, um, he does some writing, he's been a good assistant to the town hall, not to the first selection. And that's, I don't think that's how his job is defined, so.
I'm gonna handle here the person who's, uh, plenty of discussion I have is, uh, Mr. Kastner, we refer to Mr. Kastner's experience and, uh, knowledge of regulations. Uh, in, in reference to that, because I feel it's relevant, I would like a brief, detailed explanation on this floating zone issue coming up.
Dick can answer it as well as I can, we cannot talk about that tonight, it's not part of this.
I want to vote into our vote.
Oh, you're voting, sorry. But I want to, floating zone, and that's why I'm here.
Frankly, I, I can't answer that question, I don't know how Jonathan thinks about it, but I have a vote.
I think, I think, uh, because, um, because we're, we're at a town meeting, we're trying to take to what's on the agenda for, uh, approving the nominee.
What's on the agenda, what do you think?
Uh, the time I, I think, uh, time to question an appointment would be when the Selectmen made it at the Selectmen's meeting.
Use the mic.
I also, I also think that the time, the time, the time to discuss that is, is going to be added to Planning and Zoning meeting, when Jonathan either has or has not an opportunity to vote. And a thing to keep in mind here is, this vote, however this vote turns out, Jonathan will be, continue to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He is an alternate. If he does not, if he does not move up to the regular position, then he will continue to be an alternate. This does not mean he's not part of the commission, this means that he is or is not a regular member.
I think I saw you answer the question. I just, I have two things I want to add. Um, I, and I don't want it to be just about.
Yeah, say your name, please.
Anthony Bolduc, sorry. Um, I didn't want this to be just about Jonathan, this should be about anybody. It should be about, you know, you shouldn't have a town clerk or, or, I guess, stack the Planning and Zoning with employees.
Right.
The also, the other thing I wanted to bring up was Section 8.11 of the Connecticut General Statutes, I think, also defines this, uh, conflict of interest. Um, actually, one third thing. I, I tried to look up the original, uh, ordinance in the, the town clerk's office, and both pages are missing from the town clerk's office, so you can't really look into what salary was meant, if it was meant as like any monetary gain from the, you know, from the town, so there's no real way to define that, um, because those pages.
The ordinance is online.
Yeah, I mean, the discussion that happened, the town meeting minutes, they're all there.
Like, the town meeting minutes are there, they're in the town act book, in the Board of Selectmen's.
Sorry, Board of Selectmen's.
Which is, which is all paper search is what happens at, for approval of the town.
Right, I was looking for the town act.
Yeah.
And the pages aren't there, you got the town act.
Amy told me about that yesterday, when you came in and researched, I, I don't know how you made out to say it, but I was waiting to see what it was.
Let's, I just wanted to know something.
Any questions on this side?
Some back here.
Um, I have a question. And this is probably something I should know, that is, is the question about salary as opposed to paid?
Yes.
So there's a clear prohibition of someone who's like a full-time salary.
Yes.
Member, but the issue is that Mr. Kastner does some work for the town?
Yeah.
Right. And I, I, I do see that sort of legal difference. I, I guess I would question, yeah, the origin of that difference, and whether the point was to avoid any possible appearance of conflict of interest, which maybe under line.
I'm happy to share with the, with you all, the legal opinion of the attorney that was written in 93, and the subsequent follow-up for that, if you would like.
Sure.
Yeah, Gus Luker, I think 100.
A second, I think we're still far.
Yeah, he was gonna just answer my question, but, yeah.
He handed you the mic down.
Give it to Angus.
To the Board, this is dated, uh, 9, it was recorded in Volume 7, page 246, on, uh, April 13th, 1993. "To the Board of Selectmen, Town of Deep River, regarding eligibility of members of the Deep River Planning Commission. Apparently some discussion has arisen concerning the eligibility of three present members of the Deep River Planning Commission to continue to hold their position in light of the town's ordinance and state statute, both of which disqualify anyone from holding a, quote, 'salaried municipal office.' At first, thinking this prohibition was only the reason of our town ordinance, it was only by reason of our town ordinance I gave advice that the ordinance could be amended for clarification, I have since been corrected by many sources. The language in our ordinance is taken word for word from Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-19, and therefore cannot be eliminated. The town can amplify and clarify, however. I have done some research into the correct interpretation of set of, quote, 'salaried municipal office' to give the town some guidance. It is my opinion that none of the three persons in question presently hold such a position. The two members of the Board of Tax Review are municipal officials, but they are not salaried. Their jobs are essentially volunteer. During the year of revaluation, one has been reimbursed $142 and the other $185 for the expenses associated with the special viewings of property. This would not be the case in the nine intervening years of no revaluation. The fact that they have received these small amounts does not make them salaried within the meaning of the statute. A municipal official is one who has the authority to make sovereign decisions on behalf of the town, and who has a term of office ending only when the term expires or upon removal for improper behavior. As such, members of the Board of Tax Review are municipal officials, but they do not receive the salary, thus they qualify to be on the Planning Commission. The other member who's asked this question works as, um, control center, is a town employee who is under the supervision of the Board of Fire Commissioners, is salaried on many of the statute, which includes earning wages. However, in my opinion, he is not a municipal official in that he does not make sovereign decisions on behalf of the town. His term is not specified through election or appointment, and he continues to be employed at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen as any other town employee. It is necessary for a person to meet all aspects before he is disqualified. The mere fact that someone is on the town payroll does not in and of itself disqualify. If it was desired, a list could be formulated of the ineligible positions, would certainly include the Selectmen, the Assessor, the Tax Collector, the Probate Judge, and the Town Clerk. No volunteer positions would be disqualified except positions on other landings commissions." Um, and I followed up with, based on our last meeting, I had asked for an updated opinion, and that came, um, on December 27th. Um, what has been, what is, what is, bulk of your concern has been asked and answered going back to 1993. I've attached the legal opinion of the town attorney written in, oh, sorry, that's, that's my credit. The opinion from the attorney starts here. The general statutes contain 7-421, parentheses, E, which authorizes a town to adopt an ordinance that permits municipal employees to serve on zoning and planning commissions, so it is not considered wrong per se to have town employees serve on these boards. Therefore, we are left to determine what Deep River's ordinance means. Could have prohibited all employees from serving, or it could have allowed all employees to serve, or anything in between. Since the town chose to use the words 'salaried office' rather than any employment, which would have been easy to say, I take this to mean something different from all employees. An ordinance was not even needed if all employees were to be banned, as the default is that municipal employees cannot serve without such an ordinance. Words used are taken to have their ordinary meaning, and no words can be disregarded as unimportant if there is a reasonable interpretation by using them. Therefore, in my opinion, Jonathan is not a salaried employee, because he is paid by the hour, therefore he can't serve."
Who wrote, who wrote, who, uh?
Town, town attorney, Jane March.
That's one person's opinion.
That's correct, that's, that's who we go to, to the town, our town council for a number of years.
That whale of 575, I don't know. I guess basically, you know, that is, is people said that's an opinion, or these are all opinions that, that we're talking about here. Long and short of it is, you can all say that salary could be defined by state statute, but we don't have the actual answer, because the state statute is being answered by people's opinions, and our attorney is actually an employee for the town. There are other people on board that can serve, and it would probably just be easier at this point to let another person do this and sort this out later. Thank you.
I have a question. My question is, how many members are there on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I believe that there are seven.
Seven.
Seven regular members.
Seven regular members, as well. So, you're talking about the voice of one person versus six others.
Correct.
What are we really talking about here? This is ridiculous. In fact, this is one person, you're not even supposed to see a power of word. Thank you.
I just gotta throw one more thing out there, I just want to say, to answer his question, transparency. Um, I mean, he could always say, and Jonathan's very knowledgeable, um, probably nobody knows more about it than he does, but he could also be, you know, as a, an advisor, um, to the planning. And he's still an alternate, now, frankly.
I'm not arguing for realities. I'm thinking about the optics, because if you go to the town website and hit Selectmen, you get four pictures. The two. The two selected that are here before us, and Gina, and Jonathan. The optics just aren't good.
Well, we removed that speaker. Gus Luker, John River Road, Deep River. So, um, before I hear you say, how long has Jonathan been on this board?
Over thirty.
He's been on the board thirty years. Over thirty years. Um, again, why is he keeping appointed? Isn't it time to put new people in? Move new people who there's ordinance always in place, that, why don't they just get moved on, and, you know, that's what, that's the point I'm trying to, other than the whole legality of it, whether he's salaried or not, what's his, uh, official town type?
Assistant.
Assistant to who?
Town hall.
Town hall.
Jim Olson, four-year-old woman's approach to Deep River. I met John when he first came to Deep River from Fred Rock, New York. Immediately joined the fire department, and I might have the timeline wrong, but immediately, almost immediately after that went and was a dispatcher at Control Five, and many people know that, and there's probably a lot of new people in town that don't know that, but he, he dispatcher, fire department, Ann Wilson, constables for many, many years for Control Five up at John Williams Junior High School. He's been on the board of, of the planning and zoning for thirty years. I don't know of anybody that's, at, at his age, that is independent-minded and speaking as he is, you see him changing letters down at the field. Um, so I have no, no qualms as to John's ability to make a decision that's by the regulations, which he probably knows more than just about anybody else in town. Um, as to the, the point of getting new board, new, new faces on the board, I was on the Deep River Board of Education in the art four for seventeen years. And as my terms went up, or I was not re-elected, or my term goes up, I was constantly asked to be back on the board, because nobody else stepped up. And there's a lot of people in here that say, we need new people, we need new people, we need new people to step up and volunteer, be on the board. And when people say, we need new people, well, the people have to step up and be willing to do it.
They have to, yeah, they will.
Excuse me?
New people.
You just said.
Well, there are now, but I mean, I, I'm hearing that there's other people and all that, and there's a lot of people in the audience that say, we need new blood and whatnot. I'm one of the people that have asked in, in the future to be on this planning and zoning board, uh, uh, board also, whether that happens at some point or not, but it's all the boards in town, everybody wants to, you know, make, and everybody's opinion is important, but you need to come to the meetings, and you need to volunteer, and get on, on these boards, and see how these work, and see how it works, and not let personal, your personal opinions, or how you think Jonathan might vote, or who somebody might vote, you get on them, you, you learn the, learn the job, and, and step up and be a part of that community.
Well said. Well said. Thanks. I'm Carrie Anne Perry at one twelve Kirkland Street. Um, does Mr. Castner serve on the EDC, the Economic Development Commission?
Yes, he does.
Why is he on two boards then?
I think that there's, there are, I don't have the list in front of me, but there are people that serve on more than one board throughout the town, because they're number one, because of the shortage of, of people that are volunteering.
That's not true, my husband called and asked you about people on the economic development.
Good. Did he send, send me enough?
He did.
And I, I will.
He's been there, he's been there for a long time, he comes down, managing attorney for Travis.
Thank you. We have, we have a vacancy right now, people.
I can't remember what she said, I want to hear her comment.
She said that I ignored her husband when he applied for, for the Economic Development Commission, and I will be happy to talk with you again, we have to track when, when you, I don't remember when you called, and I don't want to get off the track of this particular meeting, but I will tell you that I'm happy to talk with you, we have people on that commission, we have a vacancy now. The Economic Development Commission didn't need for probably three or four years. We have just stated them in the last few months, we've become active again, we have other people that have asked, we're trying to filter through, try to build that vacancy. I'd like to get back to this.
I have a question. Um, the board member, the one we're talking about, how many are female? Two. Two. And Jonathan's replacing a female?
Uh, yeah, who resigned.
So I did a little research, of all our boards, thirteen are headed by men, the majority of the boards are populated by men. I would like to force that our boards begin to represent, ask for the majority.
I would ask you to volunteer for any one of the positions that you might be fit to, and, and send a letter, send him out.
But I don't want us to need more.
I think I send the hand on this side, before I go to the other side?
Can we just announce names, please?
Yeah.
Announce names.
Name is, Simon Popper, very soon. Um, Angus just used, um, the last permission, that, uh, somebody else would volunteer for, who was on the head of, uh, the, he wasn't a good prosecutor, because he was already on the town here.
Can't hear you.
No, no, no.
My right is in your mouth.
The land use commissions cannot, members of land use commissions cannot serve on more than one commission, on another land use commission. There's a land use commission, that's by state statute.
You also said that vacancies are posted quarterly.
They're posted whenever the new, they're, they're posted every day, if you go on the website, they're posted quarterly when the Deep River news comes out.
So they're posted quarterly, they're not.
All the other news, all the vice-views.
Were all four of these vacancies posted in the Deep River news?
All four, I'm not sure what, all four vacancies you mean, there are not four big ones.
Three were approved on the zoning, on the twenty-seventh.
Those were not vacancies. They're not vacancies, these are reappointments. Every single person on this, every single person that we voted for today, outside of Michael Spanner, are reappointments. There are people that were members, that expressed an interest in continuing to be members.
John's still posted in the town news.
Yeah, well, no, because it can't, it came open two weeks before the board signed it.
So it wasn't posted quarterly, it was posted.
Thank you.
I'd like to know, isn't it a conflict of interest if one person is on the Economic Development Committee and the Planning and Zoning Committee?
No.
Why isn't it?
Why is it?
Because if you're on the Planning and Zoning Committee and the Economic Development Committee, aren't you going to be a little, um, prejudiced towards economic development rather than to the concerns of the residents?
No.
Why not? Economic development is a concern of the residents. What? Economic development should be paramount to the concerns of the residents.
Yeah, but I'm a resident.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm a resident, sorry. So I wouldn't want some business opening up right next door to my house, which is what, you know, clothing zones is all about.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yes, it is.
Well, it's not, it's not.
That's exactly what clothing zones is about.
No, it's not.
I have a question back here.
Uh, excuse me, Tom Metcalf, uh, there's been discussion about, uh, the longevity of John on the commission, and maybe to turn the argument around, since when is having that experience a bad thing? Um, you, a lot of people have talked that it's a bad thing. If you look in the past thirty years, uh, the, I'll say in quotes, the development of the town, um, I don't want to compare us to Chester and Essex, but I will. I think that, um, Deep River has progressed and developed in a manner which, um, at least suits me, and I think a lot of the residents in the town of Deep River, um, going back, and I think Jonathan has had his hand in all of this, from the industrial park, to the development of Plattwood Park, to the main streets, uh, streetscape, uh, to the development of new businesses in town, um, I mean, Jonathan has had his hand in that. I don't think that that is a bad thing, I think that is a good thing, and, uh, with Jonathan at the helm, if you will, going forward, I would like to think that Deep River is on the right path, and will continue on the right path.
Thank you.
Marissa Matthews, Deep River Farm, three sixty-two West South Street. Uh, just a clarification question, so Jonathan's, uh, an alternate now?
Correct.
We'll be voting for him to be a permanent member, does that mean an alternate seat is now vacant?
Yes.
So, um, how quickly does that happen, and how will that?
We have, as I said, we've received, um, new applications, or not, they're not applications, but a few letters of interest in the last couple of weeks, um, and one from, one from a year ago, and we will review all of those and have, hopefully have a conversation with each of those people, and see who we can get on.
So I would say, I, I would say, um, first of all, Jonathan, thank you for your service, um, I think that's.
(applause)
I also will say, though, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with some, some folks that have spoken, um, I think we do need to have a balance on all the commissions, if it's possible. Um, I think both years of experience, experience is very important, but I also think we need, we do need some diversity on some of these commissions, I mean, some diverse minds, some diverse ideas, or else it is, you know, we're, we're not benefiting from the opportunity that some of those diverse ideas could bring to the commissions. So, um, I think we do need to have some balance on that, I think we do have to look at ourselves, though, and say, hey, you know, when these postings come up, we got to be more aware. Um, it sounds like this one was a quick one, and maybe we haven't, you, you know, used and explored all the ways of it being posted, um, so we should probably just pay a bit more attention to that, and, and, uh, you know, all of us as citizens have to pay a little bit more attention to this.
Hi, Tom Jerry, one thousand, third street. Um, Angus, you said Jonathan's a friend of mine, I want to do his way. You said, you said that currently there's only five people that go on these meetings, and it seems to me there's a lot more than five. So the question I have...
I said that there were usually five, and it's very nice to have this.
It is.
We have a name?
When I'm getting out of this, I always say, Tom Jerry, there seems to be, uh, a lot of people opposed and a lot of people for. And so my question is, is if Jonathan's application wasn't approved, then what would happen? Would you go to the alternates, or sitting there, ready to be reviewed?
Yes.
And would you then look at the three people that have expressed an interest in it, and then to address her question, the female, uh, member? I just think that, however it is, you vote, it should be the majority of the people out here that are happy, so you don't be a bitter pill when everybody's smiling, because not everybody's going to be happy, and they should. The first three, four people that you voted on, everybody's in favor, and I just think there's controversy here, and that's just my opinion, and Jonathan's a friend of mine, I don't think there's anything that is, but, it's just, you know, that's all I think.
So I just wanted to follow up, my original question was about this issue of salary and payment, and it was, it was a lot of information that you read a lot of English, but it did seem to me that everybody acknowledged that the definition in the state statute, the definition in the, uh, local ordinance, whatever, was a little ambiguous, and one of the clarifications from ninety-three, there were three people who were discussed, and two of them, although they were officials in the town, they either had, they were, one was a volunteer, I recall, completely volunteer, and one made seventy or eighty dollars in a year, so basically a volunteer. So, and then the other person was in a, yeah, it's not like you have to be an official and paid. Uh, to me, the issue that Jonathan's not full-time, I, and by the way, I have no issue with his long service, I, I don't see that as disqualifying it anywhere, I see, but I am very concerned by the issue of working for the town and being on a commission, and I'm not totally convinced by the various arguments that he's not salaried. So, that's my point, based on my...
Charlie, I'm probably the only resident on the Maritome line, so there you go. Um, I think the issue about whether the opinion was written, it was written by this town attorney, it wasn't like someone who drove somebody off the street, it was actually an attorney that wrote it, it was specific to that, understanding the word salary and everything else like that, I just feel like that is an opinion that has been set and kind of guided us through that, I think it's not, I think there's some ambiguity as if who wrote that, why did they write it, was the town attorney, to answer this very question. So I think that, to me, that seems like a sad, a weird, a sad thing.
Somebody call the press, do you want to call the press?
I moved this idea, I have a request.
Yeah, that's, that's up to these guys.
I withdraw.
Okay. There's a motion to vote. I think...
Yeah. I'd like to, I personally would like to get everybody, make sure that everyone has an opportunity.
Sure, sure.
Uh, make sure everyone's had the opportunity to speak, is everybody happy?
Anybody else, uh, anybody else?
Gary Clark, forty-six, Laurelwood. Um, Jonathan was a member, and then he stepped down and became an alternate, correct?
Jonathan was a regular member, he stepped down.
And he was, he was chairman?
He was the chairman.
And then he stepped down and became an alternate?
Correct.
All right, um, I don't understand if, I mean, I understand he's been an outstanding member of the town, and he served in the, the, this committee for a long time, but if he decided he wanted to step down, why wouldn't we put somebody else in that place instead of giving him another chance?
It wasn't an opportunity to give him another chance, he was chairman, he stepped down to make room for someone else to get on the commission, who needed to be on the commission, because they changed the rules at the regional planning agency. He had a representative at the regional planning agency who was not a member of the planning and zoning commission. The rules at the regional planning commission, regional agency changed, so that they were, they required that a member, that it had to be a regular member of the planning and zoning commission in order to represent your town at that agency. Jonathan generously stepped, took, stepped down from the chairmanship, and took the alternancy in order to make room for someone else to move up into that role.
But we're still, but we're still talking about making room, so that's why I'm, I'm posing a question.
That, I just answered, thank you.
Last chance, do you have any questions? And also it's a motion, we have a motion on the floor, now we can go to the, we have the discussion, so. Um, uh, we'll see how we do with, uh, show hands, for yays and nays, and all this counting, depending on the majority of the, so, just stand by the count. Uh, all in favor of, uh, appointing Jonathan Castner to the planning and zoning commission in the term that expired twenty twenty-one, please, uh, raise your hand. Keep them up, so, keep them up so we can count them, please.
Seventeen, come, John, John, John. No, seventeen.
Okay.
One more time, because I...
Double check the number here. Okay, we're all set, hands down, and, uh, all those opposed, raise your hand, please. Hands opposed, hands up. Now we can watch, take a few minutes. Okay, thank you very much, and we'll see if the numbers are...
We'll still count the room.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
You should tell us before you vote.
Oh, I, there's not enough. Oh, there's not an accurate count, it's not, people got... Yeah, two total heads down, you don't wanna count twice. Okay, check them out. Okay, um, total vote yes, forty-two, total vote no, thirty-five.
Motion, Carrie, uh, the question was, uh, this follow-up on the total count, you asked, so, total count?
Eighty-two. Yeah, one person actually came in when you were counting, so there's one extra that would be more.
Motion, Carrie, uh, have questions?
I have a question. It's not related with someone.
Let me explain, help me turn the meeting.
That's fair, I got, we're calling to talk about what's on the agenda right now, so, but it's not...
What has to do with both? I have a question about the vote.
Uh, about the voting party? I think that's a fair question to ask, yes.
Yeah, well, I have, my question is, why are we selecting voters? Are they represented us?
Uh, they're citizens of the Town, and this is a Town meeting, you can vote as a citizen.
Move the door, Kathy.
Total voters was seventy-seven, was yes?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two in the vote. Okay, um, I, uh, since without any other further business on the agenda to cover, I can have a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Beating there, voting there. Thank you very much.